Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Spotsylvania County Regular School Board Meeting for the 23rd of May. We have six board members present. Ms. Shelley is not present with us today. She is at Riverbend High School convocation for award ceremony for her daughter. So we wish her well, and she said that depending on the pace of that award ceremony, she may be back to join us. So, right now, we have six board members present, and that provides for us a quorum. We have Deputy Bartman in the back of the room with Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department. We're glad that he's here with us and in place. Thank you, sir, for your service. If we could have the Assembly please rise, and Mr. Twig, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Before we approve the agenda for this evening, I want to open up by making a statement that here recently, we've experienced a very sad event where we lost one of our students. It's an 11th grade student at Cortland High School. Her name is Vanessa Campos. She passed away on the 20th of May. During her brief life, she touched the lives of many and will be missed tremendously. Please join me in a moment of silence in Vanessa's honor. We have our agenda in front of us, but we have an order, I mean, a motion in order to adopt the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda.
Okay, we have an amendment. Please, Ms. Gramps.
I move to move 8.04 and 8.05 to the beginning of Item 8, so before 8.01, 8.02, and 8.03.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Gramps to amend the agenda items, starting with 8.04, making that 8.01, making 8.05, 8.02, 8.01 would then be 8.03, 8.04, and 8.05 respectively. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Blaine. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, the amendment carries 6-0, one not present. We have no public hearing this evening. We will begin with Ms. Flannard with 3.01, the REACH Program.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Established at Chancellor High School in 2008, the REACH Program addresses the mandated transitional component of the federal law for our students with disabilities. REACH is an acronym for Reaching Educational and Career Hopes. And it is a transitional life skills and vocational post-secondary opportunity for our students in Spotsylvania County with more impacted disabilities. The program supports students in all phases of life by providing recreational, social, and career opportunities within the school and the community environments. The staff works collaboratively with adult service providers and community providers to assist students in the transition from school to work process. Students in the REACH Program participate in a variety of work-related activities in order to develop skills needed for employment, and also to participate in a variety of recreational activities. Tonight, we have Mr. John Longenecker, Mr. Frank Poverick, and Ms. Dorice Young with us to share more about this program. If you could please come forward.
We would like to invite you all to train us on a tour of the REACH Program.
Thank you all first. REACH, as was said earlier, which stands for Reaching Educational and Career Hopes, is a post-secondary program for students with disabilities aged 18 to 22. We serve students from all five Spotsylvania County High Schools. The idea is for our students that they can attend their high school, and then graduate with their peers, and then they can come into the REACH Program for their post-secondary portion of their education. Tonight, we are going to discuss our key components for the REACH Program.
The key to transition is a very broad area. We work closely with adult service agencies in the areas of Rapidly Community Service Board, Goodwill, Disability Resource Center, and the Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services to collaborate services for our team members. Vocational skills and career exploration is our biggest focus. Our team members participate in a number of job experiences, both in the school and within their community. We work on landscaping, secretarial tasks, cleaning, and custodial jobs, recycling, deliveries, woodworking, and restaurant skills with our weekly breakfast called the Jolt, where our team members do everything from the inventory, the shopping, the cooking, the waiting on customers, and the running of the cash register. Transition also includes all those everyday life skills: cooking, banking, budgeting, transportation, communication, personal hygiene, and socialization. In REACH, everywhere we go and everything we do becomes a teachable moment. Another key component to the REACH Program is community involvement. We are very thankful to have many business partners in our community who have supported our program, and especially our team members. Some of these partners include Giant, Salsaritas, 360 Feed, Meadows Nursery, Sonic, Rapidan Golf, and World Market, just to name a few. Our team members also participate in a variety of recreational activities. We feel that this is essential for them to be active members of their community and know what is available to them as they enter the adult world. Some of the recreational opportunities include swimming, picnics, museums, dinner theaters, mall trips, and just last week, we went to Miller's Farm, picked our own strawberries, and then made strawberry shortcake. REACH also gives back to the community with volunteer opportunities. We have volunteered for Ricky's Refuge, raised money for breast cancer awareness, handed out popcorn and hot cocoa for Meadows, stacked wood for community firewood programs, worked for the Pathways to the Future Transition Fair, and assisted with several school-based Special Olympics. We are very fortunate to have our very own Special Olympics team as part of Area 11. We participate in soccer, basketball, and track and field. As you can see from the picture on the right, we have even taken the Polar Plunge in Virginia Beach. We feel Special Olympics is an integral part of our program to teach teamwork, sportsmanship, and personal skills.
In 2011, a Gallup survey in cooperation with the University of Massachusetts showed that intellectuals with disabilities ages 21 through 64 have an employment rate of only 34 percent. This includes competitive, full-time-employed, part-time-competitive-employed, and sheltered workshop settings. We put together numbers for our program, and currently, we have 50 young adults who have completed the REACH Program or will do so this June. As you can see, we currently have 64 percent who are employed. There is also a large number that we're not real happy with. It's the number not working, but please remember that out of those 10 young adults who are not working, five are still in the REACH Program and will be aging out this June. Remember, we still have four more weeks to acquire employment for them. Actually, tonight, I can proudly say that this week, we will have two of our team members interviewing for jobs, and we feel very confident by the end of the week that that number of employed will be up to 68 percent. Well, we asked two of our former team members to tell us a little bit about what REACH meant to them.
Hi, my name is Josh. I was in the REACH Program. I really enjoyed it. It was a great experience. I did got a lot of work, learned a lot of work, stuff, nothing, and I...
Working?
Working at Riverbend for Sedexo.
Great. As you guys heard, Josh is working at Riverbend two days a week in the cafeteria with Sedexo. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Braswell and our friends from Sedexo for partnering with us last year to allow us to come into the high school cafeterias to work on the program. As you see, it led to employment for one of our team members, so thank you for that.
My name is Spencer Carter. I'd like to send a quick note about REACH and all the great things this program has done for me. It has taught me independence and leadership, which has led me to getting my driver's license and a full-time job with benefits. I work at the FBI Catermain Chronicle, for REACH I am very grateful. I have made a lot of friends because of this program. It was a fun program to begin. The REACH staff is awesome. I thank them for making it possible.
Okay, and as proud as we are of our team members for gaining employment, Spencer here said something that really touches all of our hearts. He said he made real friends, but at his time at REACH. To have that, to be able to take that into the community after school, to be able to do things with friends, taking that into their adult life means so much, and we are so grateful for that. That wasn't actually one of the ideas when we started REACH, but we found that it has really worked that way.
Hello, Board. We would like to give a special thanks to, thank Rachel for all her support, and to Jackie Barr, for June, and the administrative staff at Chancellor High School for their support as well.
Okay, and lastly, we have keys for each of you, and this is a key to a free Jolt experience next year. We are not, no longer doing it this year. We're a bit too busy doing other things in the community, but starting back next year, from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. every Wednesday morning, we would like to present you guys with a free breakfast. So bring your key on by and get a breakfast.
Mr. Longenecker and Ms. Young, were you finished with your portion? Because some board members would like to offer some comments and share words of encouragement. Mr. Twig, please go first.
Thank you. I, thank you. I personally want to commend you for all your efforts as teachers and leaders, and I just appreciate and love all of your students. I have a son who's walked through your program, and he's a wonderful young man, and that did a whole lot to develop him while he attended. So I applaud everything you're doing, and I'll be gracious to continue to support everything you do and your near-future agenda toward attaining more space and better space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Ms. Blaine.
Just to say, I'm so proud of this program. I happen to be very familiar with how it works, and it just does so much for these young people in their second stage of life. But also, I really want to thank Dr. Baker and, excuse me, Mr. Wolf and his staff for spotlighting this and telling the community this exists. I think a lot of people watching will not even realize that this program exists and the good things that y'all are doing. So congratulations on a job well done, and keep it up.
Any other board members? Mr. Blaine.
I just very quickly would like to say, this key is going to be used early in the year, so you folks study hard all summer long and be prepared with a terrific breakfast. Congratulations for everything you do, all of you, both your students and the faculty especially.
I want to finish by saying that your program, when you had the, I was just so pleased that you invited me, so I could see the great work that you do, and the young lives that are being touched and enriched because of your dedication to them and this program's intent. So thank you, both of you, all of you in fact, for what you do. And I said it before, and I really meant it, that breakfast puts shonies to shame. It really does. And it was excellent, and everything from the service, the taste of the food, it was just a great environment, and I was blessed to be a part of it. So thank you for that. I will be back around, but I, and I thank Sedexo for their engagement. I want to continue to ask our community partners to engage in this great endeavor. But I want to ask you to reach a little bit, if you will, and find another opportunity for me to really explore what you do, because you do more than obviously Jolt. And I'd like to just, even if I have to put on a pair of jeans, I'm cool with that. Give me an opportunity to see more and explore more of what you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Braswell, if I might, before these folks sit down, I also wanted to thank all of the leaders. I know that one of the first things I was invited to when I started here was the REACH Program, and what a pleasant surprise it was. And I think it's been said tonight, this did not happen by accident. It happened because we had folks like you who care and are dedicated, and truly are proud of what these students are accomplishing, and you're a big part of that. I'd also like to thank Ms. Richardson and her support of it, as well as our school board, for taking a part in it and for continuing to find ways to help you improve it and expand it. But we're very proud of the work that you do and very proud of each of the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to our recognitions and awards. 4.01, Nurse of the Year recipient, Mr. Uppercoe.
Thank you, Chairman Braswell, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize Livingston Elementary School's Nurse Susan Stover as one of the recipients of the 2016 Spirit of Women Awards. This annual awards program through Mary Washington Healthcare honors ordinary women who selflessly provide extraordinary service to the benefit of their communities. Mrs. Stover is no ordinary woman. Mrs. Stover was chosen as this year's Nurse of the Year. This award recognizes excellence and innovation in school nursing, and those who create a culture of wellness that benefits students and staff. Mrs. Stover, congratulations on this distinguished honor. We truly appreciate your dedication to the families of Spotsylvania. Come on down.
For the seventh year in a row, the Association of School Business Officials International is pleased to announce that Spotsylvania County Public Schools has received the ASBO's Meritorious Budget Award MBA for its 2015-2016 annual budget. Also, the School Division received a letter from Senator Mark Warner whereby he commended the superintendent and the School Division for receiving the Government Finance Officers' Association Award for 2015-2016 fiscal year. This award, per Senator Warner, exemplifies high-quality work, a commitment to excellence, and the execution of the best budgeting practices. On behalf of the Board, we congratulate the following individuals for their dedication in the preparation of the award-winning Spotsylvania County Public Schools FY16 budget book. We welcome the management team to come forward to be recognized as we announce your name. LaShawn Gaines, Chief Financial Officer; Marcia Stevens, Director of Budget and Payroll; Barbie Stombach, Director of Finance. And we'd also like to thank the others who helped out. Leah Underwood, Program Analyst; Bridget Smith-Herds, Senior Financial Analyst; Doreen Flint, Accounting Technician; and Melissa Webster, the Administrative Assistant.
To Mr. Chair, the members of the Board, Dr. Baker, to our audience, good evening. Each year, Spotsylvania County Public Schools participates in the Teacher of the Year Program coordinated statewide through the Virginia Department of Education. All public and accredited non-public schools are able to participate in the Virginia Teacher of the Year Program to honor teachers who represent the best in teaching in Spotsylvania County Public Schools, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and across the nation. The program is open to all teachers in pre-kindergarten through grades 12 who possess a current renewable Virginia Teaching License, including school librarians, school counselors, and reading specialists. The Office of Human Resources is pleased to have coordinated this program with our site principals. From this group of 31 nominees, the 2016 Division Teacher of the Year was chosen from a committee of former winners and other division leaders, and was recently announced at the Spotsylvania Education Sage Banquet. Join me on this evening in congratulating Spotsylvania County Public Schools' 2016 Division Teacher of the Year Carolyn Kleiner, Spanish Teacher of Freedom Middle School. Ms. Kleiner, while you're having your picture taken, I'm going to share a few highlights of your work. Our Division Teacher of the Year works hard to create a classroom environment that is a safe place where risks are encouraged and mistakes are seen as steps of growth and achievement. Ms. Kleiner believes that great teachers must be equally passionate about their students as they are their content, and she is. Her principal, Alan Jacobs, calls her a leader and a role model within his school and the region. She is service-oriented and participates in community outreach through her church and other organizations. Her undergraduate degree is in elementary education and Spanish. She holds a master's degree in world languages through George Mason University. She taught Spanish in Spotsylvania County since 2004, and again, we want to congratulate you for an amazing accomplishment. At this time, we will recognize the Division Mentor Teachers of the Year. We do have a teacher from each level, elementary, middle, and high school. We would like to take an individual picture and then also ask that you would stay up so we could take a group picture as well. Elementary School Mentor Teacher of the Year, Casey Redding, 4th grade teacher at Spotswood Elementary. Mike Brown, Casey's principal, says, "A great mentor can set a new teacher on a positive trajectory that can last an entire career." Ms. Redding has done this, that this year for Mrs. Miller. She has served as a major contributor to the development of a wonderful first-year teacher. I wish every mentor could be as effective as Mrs. Redding. Middle School Mentor Teacher of the Year, Tanya Hall, English teacher, Spotsylvania Middle School. Lindsay Ellinger wrote of her mentor, "She has been an amazing teacher to look to as a role model and always carries herself in a professional manner. Her encouraging nature, her past experiences, and her genuine concern for me have certainly kept a smile on my face this first year of my teaching career all year long." High School Mentor Teacher of the Year, Claire Sumner, Special Education Teacher, Riverbend High School. Her mentee, Ann Blaine, credits Claire for being a driving force and encouraging Ann to transition from being a par educator in Claire's classroom just last year to becoming a novice special education teacher within the Riverbend Special Education Department this year. She wrote, "Claire is so completely undaunted by any challenge in the classroom, behavioral or curricular, that is not hard, that is hard not to trust that her advice is sound." Congratulations. We will now recognize our Division New Teachers of the Year. Elementary School New Teacher of the Year, Lindsay Rose, Special Education Teacher, Cedar Forest Elementary. Principal Amy Williams wrote, "Not one week has passed this year that someone has not stopped me to share what a positive impact Ms. Lindsay Rose has had on our school and our special education program. Her enthusiasm for teaching and learning, knowledge of her students, and instructional best practices, and dedication to individualizing instruction are a few of the reasons she has been selected as Cedar Forest's New Teacher of the Year." Congratulations, Ms. Rose. Middle School New Teacher of the Year, Lindsay Ellinger, English teacher, Spotsylvania Middle School. According to mentor Tanya Hall, Lindsay is a one-of-a-kind, doesn't come around very often, first-year teacher. "She is my fourth mentee, and she is unlike any other. She handles her classroom with grace and finesse that is truly rare in a novice teacher. She often pushes students past what they think their limits are, and when they meet or exceed that goal, which they normally do, she helps them to reflect on the knowledge they have gained and the benefits of reaching for the stars." High School New Teacher of the Year, Rebecca Williams, Health and Physical Education Teacher, Spotsylvania High School. And she's a graduate of Chancellor High School, class of 2010. Principal Rusty Davis says that Rebecca should be selected as the Division's New Teacher of the Year because she cares about kids and practices what we all preach. Rebecca hits the ground running, and within her first year, she has added an endorsement in driver's education, joined the coaching staff for both field hockey and softball, and served as emcee for the Student Talent Show. She is the greatest, has the greatest moral character, dependable, honest, and completely dedicated to the success of her students. Again, congratulations.
Thank you for all of the awardees for being present and allowing us to recognize you. I, first of all, without any further ado, I just, you know, I'm going to just state the blatant obvious, we have the best finance team in the game. Great leadership with Ms. LaShawn Gaines, and strong team effort by Ms. Stevens and Ms. Stombach. I said in the other meeting, you know, sometimes you don't have to say a lot. Your actions speak... Your actions speak for yourself. And so I said that Barbie, who we're getting ready to leave, I called her the Teddy Roosevelt of the finance game. She speaks softly and carries a big stick, and we're so proud of her and everything she's done for this division. So Barbie, I know maybe they can't see you in TV land, but we don't care. We see you. Could you please stand up for a round of applause, please? That's right. Don't go playing shy on me. And our Teachers of the Year, I mean, every one of them, they have an aura about them. They just have great energy. It projects from you, and I can see why you're Teachers of the Year. And I do have a partiality towards the Bulldogs of Spotsylvania, since both of my young men graduated, went through that, the Bulldog, so I'm really proud of you guys, every one of you. Thank you. And I appreciate everything that you bring, the passion that you bring to teaching our young in our best and our brightest. Thank you very much. With that being said, we're going to move on to 5.01, Public Comments. Dr. Martin.
Good evening. The Public Comments segment of our Board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the Board. A speaker may request additional time from the Board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Mr. Chairman, we do not have any speakers signed up at this time, so I turn it over back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board? Do you raise your hand or come to the podium? Anyone? Seeing none, would you please come, sir?
I don't know if I necessarily need to go up here. It's just a question, actually. My name is Michael Drolle. I'm in the Lee Hill District. I have two small children that are about to enter into the public school program. And I'm just curious as to, with all the news going around, what the superintendent, what the Board expects their approach is going to be to the transgender bathroom guidance guidelines that have been coming out from the federal level down here at the county level. So that's basically my question, just curious to see how, what everyone's thoughts are and what your plans are moving forward.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Any other, excuse me, anyone from the audience that would like to speak to the Board? Seeing none, we'll close 5.01, Public Comments, move to 5.02, Board Comments. We'll start with Dr. Meyer.
I think concerning budget, we'll speak to that, I think, when the appropriate time comes. I would like to give special thanks to our award winners this evening and recognizing, and there was a special recognition by our Chair of Spotsylvania Middle Schools and the Bulldogs. I had the opportunity to attend their band performance, you know, with the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, and what a performance was put on by Spotsylvania Middle School, something definitely to be very, very proud of. And with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. We're going to have Mr. Twig go next.
Just like the other evening, from our budget meeting, I'm very thankful to everyone who participated with and led toward achieving our budget this year, and I appreciate the increases for our teachers and staff. I remain concerned, however, that with the large increase from last year's budget, that the after-school buses for our country districts and reducing pay-for-play were still not considered a priority. And in Livingston District and Spotsylvania High School specific, our students struggle to be involved in after-school programs, and it affects the sports and music teams greatly. And the students who can are opting to play in other districts because of the lower participation in their own high school. And the cost is very small and hence very affordable, and I've already spoken with several colleagues and the superintendent, and I'm hoping that we can make some inroads toward that end. Handsome asking that when money does become available, that we, the Spotsylvania School Board, will prioritize these two items and once again make that particular issue a top priority. Special thanks to the Teachers of the Year. The banquet was wonderful, and it's always wonderful to applaud our quality, and a lot of them, I think they're all young teachers, so I think that's all good stuff, presents toward a good future for our county school system. And so I appreciate them very much. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Twig.
I had an opportunity on Saturday to attend the James Forman Scholarship Presentations at Riverbend High School. This is a group of African-American boys and girls that are selected competitively and selected at the 5th and 6th grade level and start formally in their program at 7th grade, and it follows through 8th grade and right on through high school. And they participate monthly as a group at special training programs at University of Mary Washington. And I was absolutely floored by the quality of the students that we encountered on Saturday. Kids who could speak well, who thought well, who were confident, and I need to compliment all of the folks that have worked with those boys and girls, not only in the middle schools but at our high school level. It was really a treat. In addition to that, one of the things we, at least I was very impressed with, is the fact that we have a lot of outreach in our community to families who need assistance. We have social workers, for example, who are busy all the time. And among the children that we met the other day, there were some folks who had benefited from some of those services. And I'd just like to especially compliment you folks that are in that part of the outreach of our programs.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Gramps.
Most of my comments refer to the budget, so I will save those to budget time.
Thank you, Ms. Gramps. Ms. Blalot.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Again, congratulations to all the award recipients, our Teachers of the Year, and the REACH Program. Well done. I have many budget comments as well, so I'll be refraining from speaking until that point. I did want to point out that this will be the last time that we're together as a group before we graduate our seniors of our five high schools. We're enjoying the convocations. I did have to make a trip home for a family emergency last week, but I know that Mass Aponics had their, the award ceremony for their underclassmen, and congratulations to all the award winners, and I look forward to attending the senior ceremony this week as we are honoring the ones that have received awards or received scholarship money. So with that, I yield back to you, Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Ms. Blalot. I'm going to refrain from making comments until we have a discussion on the budget, as most of my comments surround the issue of the budget. With that being said, we're going to move on to 5.03, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I'm also going to, we have several special reports that are upcoming, and I may save some comments for that point as well. There are several things that staff is going to be presenting, and so I'm going to yield my time for that.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Moving on to 6.01, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any Board Committee Reports? Mr. Blaine.
Yesterday, at Mary Washington, University of Mary Washington, the Commonwealth Governor's School had its preliminary graduation ceremonies, I guess is the correct term, but we had a terrific presentation, the first time I've had an opportunity to attend that, and there were 127, 124 students who will be graduating from our Governor's School. King George had 19 students, Caroline four. Stafford had 50 of those students, and Spotsylvania, 51 students. And our centers, as you know, are at Spotsylvania High School and Riverbend. And it was a real treat, frankly, to talk to some of the teachers and to see the dedication that they were so excited to look at what their boys and girls, these high school kids had accomplished in the last four years. The enthusiasm and their attitude toward their profession is absolutely stunning, and I cannot help but thank them and compliment them. And that same compliment really goes to all of you folks who work with us in other schools too, because that's consistently the experience I have in talking with our professional educators.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Any other committee reports? Dr. Meyer.
Just quickly to let everyone know that the Calendar Committee is live and well, is meeting under the direction of Mr. Jacobs, and as we have things to bring back to the Board, we will at the opportune time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. I'm pretty sure the calendar is alive and well. I'm sure it is. Any other comments? Any other Board Committee comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 6.02, Local Plan for Education of the Gifted. Ms. Belaco.
Good evening, Mr. Braswell, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, and Dr. Martin. Let me start my PowerPoint here. Tonight, I am fortunate to be with our gifted resource teachers and liaisons, Jenna Conley and Carrie Yon. They are here to support this special report to you on our gifted local plan. These ladies, along with all of the gifted resource teachers in our schools, have helped craft this plan, along with our gifted advisory board members, which include community and parents. So every five years, the Virginia Department of Education requires each local school division to develop and update a local plan for gifted education. The plan describes program goals and objectives, identification procedures, and services provided to students that require gifted services. The draft plan is being presented tonight that has been developed with me and these ladies, along with our gifted advisory board, as I said, for comments and feedback. During this report, a copy of the draft plan, which is in front of you in the black folder, as well as our PowerPoint, is given to you for your perusal over the next couple of weeks, and then based on your review, will come to adopt in a few weeks on the 13th of So our plan is a VDOE requirement, just as our tech, Career and Tech Plan, our Special Ed Plan. The VDOE has certain regs that we have to follow, and the gifted plan itself is a template that goes through each one of those regs where we have to describe each one of our services. Each school division has a gifted education coordinator, and I serve for our school division in that capacity, along with these ladies. Each year, every five years, I should say, the VDOE conducts a technical review of each region's school's plans, and ours was just this past fall. So the 2011 to 2016 plan was reviewed, and we were given many commendations as well as recommendations for improvement. Based on those, from those VDOE work groups, we took the review and looked at what we did well and kept those pieces of our plan. And those things that we needed to expand on or change, we certainly made those updates. The next slide talks about the contents of the plan, and these are those more mandatory pieces that are in our plan, the parts that go with the template, which includes really referral identification procedures, notification, the change in different services and service models that we employ for K-12. So we wanted to really kind of highlight for you tonight, just with a couple of slides, some key changes that you would see as a result of the feedback. One of the things that was implemented during the time of the last plan was moving our kindergarten screening from, or screening from 2nd grade to kindergarten, that early identification of gifted students. So we did work on that. We took three years to kind of move that back over the grade so we wouldn't miss any students. So now, when we screen students, we screen them in kindergarten, and then any new student that comes into our division, we have those outlined in the new plan for you. Referrals can come from any stakeholder for that child. It can be a parent, teacher, community member. So anybody can come to the teacher and bring forth a referral for gifted services. Professional learning is another area that we've enhanced in our plan this time, talking about different kinds of scheduling, enrichment and extension, and identifying twice exceptional learners. Those are our learners who qualify for both gifted services and special education. So we have really kind of brought our professional learning kind of up to where it needs to be to help teachers better understand those procedures. Some goals that we have, we live kind of in compliance world with much of the plan, but a lot of what we want to do as goals are things that we monitor on a year-to-year basis with both teachers. Equity in gifted education, equity is something that we look at for all our programs. And really, what we're looking for there is a representation that represents our whole in the smaller programs that we have. English language learners, economically disadvantaged students, African-American students, we want to make sure that our procedures are identifying these groups of students just as equally as every group of students that we have. We also are investigating additional testing instruments that will support equity. A lot of testing companies are coming out with new instruments that are less culturally biased. We do have some good ones. The Naglary Nonverbal is one that we use to screen all our students, and it is probably what I would consider to be kind of the gold standard in making sure that we have equity in that assessment. And service delivery models. One thing that we know is, just like every student, there is not one gifted student that is the same as another. So we're realizing the need to expand the different delivery models that we have to give services based on student individual needs. So those are some key changes and goals that we have for our program. With that, I know that you're just receiving this for the first time, and we will go to questions, though, based on anything that I've said.
Thank you, Ms. Belaco. Do we have any questions? We'll start with Mr. Blaine, and then we'll go to Mr. Twig.
Yes, I'm full of questions tonight, sorry. Maybe that's good. Really, for the, for our listening and viewing audience, this couple of questions. One is, you mentioned that you very carefully try to identify kindergarten through 2nd grade kids that are. What do you look for in a young child? So if I'm a father or a mother sitting at home watching this, what should I think about doing so that my child, who I think is a real brilliant child, is ready to be interviewed by you?
I think, you know, anything that would be great for any kid at home is good for the gifted child, but maybe Ms. Conley has some specific kind of key things that we look for. That'd be great.
Hi, members of the Board. For kindergarten through 2nd grade, some things you can be looking for, just that precocious child, a lot of times we see early reading, not always, but they're drawn to books, they're drawn to games, they're very playful. You can also see it with some of their art ability as well. You know, we, once upon a time, we did an assessment where we were especially looking for children who would add details inside and outside figures, maybe they looked to profile kinds of things. So it often manifests in artwork at that young age as well.
So what would you encourage a parent to be doing at home with those kids? You mentioned several general topics.
I would really suggest all kinds of games. I mean, I think that's one of the most important things. Also, reading with your children is so important for every child, and so that's essential. I would take them out into the community, get them out, go to downtown Fredericksburg, do those kinds of things where you're looking for things in- do those kinds of things where you're looking for things in your neighborhood, you know, go to pet stores and see pets and, you know, do all kinds of fun on the fly kinds of things with your kids. Go to the library.
Thank you for that. You may think that's an off-the-wall question, but you know, parents come, and when half of our principals say fifty percent of the kids come to school and they never even had a book in their hand, it's obvious that we need to motivate young people somehow. Second, and a little different question, you mentioned about the equity area, and you do mention English language learners and so on, and you have African-Americans and so on, but it seems to me that Hispanic should be in that. Is that an omission, or is that, it's there and it just wasn't mentioned, or?
Sure. It actually is. It's, equity is across the board. It wasn't an omission, but those aren't, that isn't a typical group that you necessarily are drawn to a lot of times. The difference between English language learner and a non-English language learner, Hispanic or whatever ethnic group they belong to, it's that, it's that dialogue that gets in the way from us identifying them. So being keenly aware that we have to make sure that just because they don't speak the same language as we do, not to assume that they don't have that very high ability. So, and trying to work around those kind of things.
I don't, I wasn't thinking about Hispanic as being Spanish speakers particularly, because we've got...
Correct. Any, any subgroup. We want to make sure, and I hate to use that word subgroup, that's not what I, just any different backgrounds, we want to make sure that those students, as, and any student, is equally represented in gifted population and in advanced coursework as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Mr. Twig.
Hey, question. Are you all attempting to accentuate some notable excellence in an area like math or art? Or are you just evaluating putting stuff on paper for the future? What's the goal?
Well, I think that that's a good question. Overall, we identify based on general intellectual aptitude, so there are multiple facets to that. One is an assessment, but there are portfolio pieces and grades and SOL scores. It's a whole profile of the student that we gather data on. But we do definitely look at where do their strengths lie in order to give them the necessary differentiation.
Now, do y'all work with these students, or do you just document data?
No, we, when they, when we do give those assessments and they qualify for gifted services, they do work directly with the gifted resource teacher at their school.
Okay. And then, what is the benefit of pursuing this with anybody before they're in the fifth grade? Because about that time, they're starting to show some music talent, or they're starting to accelerate in math at a point where you put them in the high math class. Do you get, do you see any advantage to what you're doing, rather than just simply waiting and not pushing the student, just waiting for his talents to pour out?
I'm really not so sure how to answer that. I definitely think that there is, and I don't know if I'd use the word advantage, but a ness, maybe a necessity. If a child has special education needs, we give them services based on that need, just as we do for students that are gifted. We need to give them services based on their needs.
I could see it plainly in that category, on the other end of the spectrum. Follow on, maybe perhaps a different way of asking my prior question. What does the school system get out of y'all working with them from K to four? What's the benefit? Why are we investing in it?
Well, I think for these folks to work with, not only identify gifted learners, but as I noted, we are looking to expand opportunities for a wide group of students and really use their expertise to help develop our teachers professionally. The thing that we get from it is we get their expertise on how do you differentiate instruction for a wide variety of learners? How do we make kids thinkers? How do we make them problem solvers? That is what they're really good at.
That's an effective answer. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Ms. Blalock.
Hi, I just have a few comments and sort of a question. I sort of kind of want you to share something with the community a little bit, but this was a great presentation. Thank you. Of course, I support it. And I wanted to touch on just a little bit that I see gifted very differently. I think a lot of us, you know, just think of really bright child. There's a big difference to me in bright and gifted. And a lot of times, the gifted child does not necessarily make the grades that you would just assume that they would make because they're gifted. I think gifted comes in all shapes and forms. And the twice exceptional child is the thing that I thought maybe one of you could speak to and share with the community that I remember long ago, when I was first on the Board, asking about this particularly, is how do we identify children that may have a plan in place to help them with their studies every day, or an IEP or 504 or something, but yet they're very gifted and they qualify for gifted services. And can you tell us how you identify that?
Sure. And I can have, either one of these ladies really kind of speak to it intimately, so either one. Come on up, come on.
There's so many places to start. For identification purposes, we have created an exceptional student identification profile so that when we're collecting data on a student who has a 504 plan or an IEP, we're able to look at more pieces. And when we come to the placement committee meeting, it's different. Instead of a typical school placement committee meeting, there are different people playing roles. We've got the case manager that comes, the parent comes. So on that end, we have changed a great deal over the past few years, and we're really proud of our team for making the changes. We've worked with Ms. Richardson, and we're really growing in that area. So that's identification.
Sure, I can talk to service.
Yeah, sure. So once we've identified twice exceptional students, we have a lot of ways of serving them in the classroom. So we're working with special education teachers and case managers to make sure that we're challenging them in their area of strength. We know that when they're twice exceptional, you know, they may have a learning disability or something that could even be masking their giftedness. So we work together to come up with ways to challenge those students, but not to the point of frustration. And so that's something that is ongoing, and we are part of that IEP team, so.
Well, I just love that we have a good, strong gifted program, especially on the elementary level, because we're not to the advanced studies or the APs or anything where they can really broaden. But you have those children, just like we try to meet the needs of the ones who have needs, the ones in between, and the ones who are already there and need to go to another level. And that's what your program does. And so we, it gives us just such a great opportunity to let them expand on their learning and go ahead and get ahead, even though they're in the same class with their peers. And Ms. Yon, you're probably going to be mad at me for saying this, but I just received a big compliment when you walked up, because I don't think I've ever seen you, and this week someone mistaked me for you. So it was very nice to meet you. You're doing a great job. They said a lot of great things about you at your school. So it was ironic that you walked up tonight, but great job. Thank you for doing such a good job with our gifted students in the county.
Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. Baker?
I'm going to be, I want to ask a little bit about the process that you all envision. On the seventh page of the plan, it indicates a fine arts gifted program may be explored for qualified high school students. Can you talk about how that has come about in terms of a recommendation, and also the process for perhaps achieving that in the future? And I'm curious also at, when we look at high school, whether it could even start earlier? Because I understand that right now, it's primarily in the verbal and the mathematics, the reasoning areas, but I know that that is one that folks have steered away from in other local plans that I've seen. And I'm very interested in it, and I'm just curious how you all will be exploring it.
So we have a few gifted resource teachers who this, that is their passion, and they plan on, you know, going and visiting other counties that have visual and performing arts section so that we can learn, because it would just be brand new to us, just learn everything we can.
And currently, as you may or may not know, we do send students to summer residential programs. And one of those is visual and performing arts. And I know over just the last few years, the number of students that actually apply for that has really gone up. And we've had quite a few students that have been accepted to that program. So as far as the talent that's here, we know that we have it, just as everything, really trying to develop that within the constraints. We have twenty identified gifted research, I'm sorry, gifted resource teachers from K to eight. And in our high schools, gifted resource teachers are stipended positions along with another subject area, whatever their subject area of expertise is. But we do, as Carrie said, have some passionate folks that really want to figure out, how can we work that into our program? Whether it's through independent studies, whether it's through some sort of coordinated effort with, many of these students are trained outside the school. They definitely are interested in seeking that pathway, so. Any other questions?
Dr. Meyer, go ahead.
I was commenting to Mrs. Blalock as you were talking, and a thought came to mind of a student that I was watching on TV where they were talking about an autistic program, where the student would be autistic, but at the same time is exceptionally gifted. And there was that one movie, I think, where they showed, I think it was Mel Gibson or one of Bruce Willis, and showing that film where a nine-year-old was able to read through a puzzle that he cracked the code, you know, with the CIA, and it turned out to be a movie. But that's where the youngster's perception is so great that they can, it can see through, the focus is so intense, that I didn't know if that's part of also when you're talking about twice.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have many students that fall with those very exceptional abilities. And our challenge and kind of our banner that we kind of carry for that is really figuring out, how do we appropriately serve those students? Because it can't look the same as we might do with a different gifted student. So it's really that personalized learning piece. We really have to really dig deep to find, what is that area that really makes that little guy or gal tick? And how can we bring out the best in them? So, absolutely.
Any other questions? Ms. Blalock, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's a very nice presentation. Thank you.
Moving on to six point zero three, Local Plan for Instructional Technology. Mr. Zakari.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the draft of the new technology plan for Spotsylvania County Schools. Why do we have a technology plan? The technology plan is a roadmap for the instructional technology department, which guides us in our everyday work and what we're doing to try to best support the instructional programs and goals of the school division. It is also a state requirement that we must have a technology plan in order to receive E-rate funding. Who worked on the plan? The plan was developed by the members of the Instructional Technology Advisory Committee, which is made up of principals, teachers, central office staff. It was then shared with other stakeholders within school community, through school and community, for comments, edits and revisions. With technology being recently reorganized under the Instructional Department, you'll notice that this plan is tightly aligned with the teaching and learning framework, framework, and also the division's strategic plan. There are five overarching goals of our new technology plan, and these goals are in alignment with the state and the national technology plans. Tonight, I will present the five main goals that drive this plan. You will also see the objectives and strategies to meet these goals when you have time to review the entire plan, which should be at each of your seats. Our first goal is to support student-centered, safe, adaptable, flexible and highly effective learning environments. Our second goal is to engage all students in multiple and meaningful ways that reflect student learning styles, cultural backgrounds and personal interests through digital resources and technologies. Our third goal is to provide students with opportunities to use digital tools and technologies effectively to gain knowledge, develop college and career readiness skills, create and develop artifacts that reflect their deep understanding of instructional content. The fourth goal is to provide all educators and students with access to digital tools to gain knowledge, develop college and career readiness skills, extend flexibility, provide opportunities to innovate, create, design and share products to demonstrate their understandings. And when you review the plan, you'll see that a number of the strategies and objectives that we have also entail large amounts of professional development for our teachers. In order to make changes in how they work and what they do with the students and make changes in their classroom, that's imperative. The last goal is to utilize digital resources to provide timely, accurate data points and individual feedback, supporting the culture of continuous improvement to improve teaching and learning. We need to get the data back to the teachers so they can make the appropriate decisions to best support their students and their learning. Next steps. Now, we're inviting you to participate. Now that the plan has been presented, I'm asking members of the Board to please review this in the next two weeks as part of the first reading. If you have any questions or concerns, you can email or call me. I'll be glad to answer any of those questions for you. And if I'm not able to answer them, I will get members of the committee together and we'll get the answers for you. I'm including my email and phone numbers since I'm not located directly in this office on a everyday basis. Hopefully, we'll get this ready for the passing at the next Board meeting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zakari, and thank you for the homework assignment. Board members, do we have any comments? Any comments?
I have.
Mr. Blaine.
Technology is wonderful, but it's got to connect to each other somehow.
Yes, sir.
What is the need that we have in Spotsylvania now to get Wi-Fi access to every child in every home? What has to be done and what is currently being done, not necessarily by us, but by the Board of Supervisors, Verizon or whoever?
That's unfortunately, and actually a bigger problem than one that we can just solve ourselves, to be honest with you. In the plan, we are looking at ways to explore how we can close that gap a little bit with different technologies that are available, whether they be hotspots and things of that nature. Those are things that we're looking for, but as far as being able to provide internet access, wireless access for folks in their homes, that's, I think, a much bigger problem that is a county problem, along with the school division, that we have to work with them to try to find a way to close that issue.
Of course, I feel that, you know, if kids can't, don't have access, the technology's not going to do them much good, some of them. And somehow, we need, from my viewpoint anyway, is to maybe work with the county and maybe confront, frankly, Verizon and some of these other, Comcast perhaps. It's, look, here you've got four hundred and seven square miles. The rural areas are poorly served. I know that. And our kids, it's hampering us up and down the line. We're going to buy textbooks. We could use electronic textbooks in many cases, but you can't if you don't...
And that's one of the reasons, I think, we try to provide as much opportunities in the schools during the days when the students are there to have, to work with the technology, for those that maybe don't have that ability when they get home.
Yep, and it's a handicap for our flip classrooms, too, because when you reverse the thing, so. Just a concern I have. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Blalock?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I thank you for your presentation. Great job. I just want to share that when I moved to this county in 2003, and I don't think she's here, but Ms. Cunningham was my principal, and I went in to meet her, and I said to her, I said, "Where is the technology?" It really, really bothered me. And that was the first meeting I had with anybody, I think. And I have to say, at that time, and this was years ago, I felt like technology and instruction were very separate. I think Dr. Meyer might be the only one that can relate to back in those days. I felt like there was something we were missing. And over, I would say, over the last ten years, I cannot tell you how impressed I am with the... with the technology department and the leaps and bounds we have moved. It is a different place than it was. I could not be more proud of the advancements we've made in this. I'm going to tell you, this is something I wish everyone could go back and see where we were in 2003. This is a different day.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the bonds and things have made that possible.
That's right.
Along with, you know, where we're headed just as a division with our leadership currently.
That's right. And our leadership married the two. And when you marry technology to instruction, we started seeing results. And that has made Spotsylvania County Schools what it is today in this area. So, we, I mean, we're always improving, but we are not going to sit here tonight and not give credit to where we have come from when I first moved here. So, thank you for all you do, and let's just keep going.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Dr., excuse me, Dr. Meyer?
I think Mrs. Blaylock's point is right on target, and I want to take advantage of this opportunity because we brought this young man to my right onboard exactly for the reason that Mrs. Blaylock highlighted. Because before, technology and instruction were two silos. Didn't communicate. There was some communication, but it was not the focus toward instruction. There still wasn't, you know, that integration that we were looking for. And that was one of the reasons we asked Dr. Baker to take that on, you know, as a superintendent. And naturally, he has. I think Dr. Strike and yourself, you know, have had a lot to do with that. And there's a, we've just begun the journey down that road, just begun. Because we've seen that as we have used more technology and more data, we have a need for more. We have to increase the size of the pipe so that we can, you know, when you say bring your own device, it's going to necessarily require more bandwidth. So that we've had to do. And I think that same conversation is going to go forward as we talk more and more with the county as to how they can help us in this journey so that more patrons can have equal access, you know, in their homes. Whether it's through the towers or whatever being created in order to do the 9/11 transmission like we have with all of our buses and so forth, you know, and they're having a sizable investment in that, in technology for security purposes, that there is an opportunity there. And that with the use, like you said, new technologies, that certainly, that will, more will become available. So, truly do appreciate everything that you and Dr. Strike and your team have done. And you've taken on a tremendous, tremendous amount of work, 24/7 kind of work. It's not an eight-hour day job. I know that. It's a 24/7 kind of job because of the service that's needed, and the more service you give, the more is going to be needed. And truly do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braywell. I wanted to ask Mr. Zakari a question, but I also have to respond. It's when you get called a young man. My age, you just want to bask in that for as long as you can. But, you know, one of the things that I appreciate, Dr. Strike, yourself, and all of the members of ITAC, as well as, I would say, that group represents a collection of leaders who have contributed to the vision of what our classrooms should look like across the board. And one of the things that we've talked about is this notion of personalized learning. And I really appreciate how the plan in its current form is very tightly aligned with the strategic plan. It's not just another plan, but it's an extension of our broader plan. And one of the things, if you could just share with the board, and these are your thoughts, how does this plan help us to advance this idea, this concept of personalized learning in action? Because I know the board, in their respective associations, they hear things like one-to-one initiatives, and they hear a lot of that language. But for our students, how does this plan enable us to better personalize their learning, engage them more, and really advance their levels of achievement?
One of the things that we have throughout the plan is there's a number of different objectives that deal with the personalization of student learning. And a lot of that ties into the professional development, again, as I mentioned before, of the teachers. And I think as the teachers get more comfortable with some of the different strategies and things that can be used in order to personalize, whether it be blended learning, some more online learning for particular students, as that grows, then the students, then that will trickle down to the students. So I think the tight connection to the professional learning of the teachers will help improve the personalized learning for the individual students, again, as they grow more comfortable with that concept.
And one other thing, too, that I'll just, as the board is reviewing, and it's three weeks, not two. So you have three weeks to review the plan. I know that we currently have representation on the County Cable Commission. I know Mr. Twig has been promoting the efforts of that group. And one of the things that I think is, it's difficult, but I would ask that we continue to try, is to get as much of a baseline of what access looks like in our respective homes across the county, particularly in more rural areas, because we're, to some extent, taking a stab in the dark as to access until we can gather enough data to feel like we really know where the challenge is and what percentage of our students and families need either extended access, need a different approach in terms of digital resources for them, so that they have the same level of access and opportunity as all other students who have it in their homes or have access to it. So I would ask, as we move forward, that we continue to try to develop a way. I know surveying, there's lots of ways to do that unsuccessfully, but to continue to think of, how can we really find out where we are in terms of the percentage of families that do not have that access once the child comes home?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. I have one short question. In your first slide, you indicated you had a, you had why initially, and then underneath that, you had who. And my question is, I noticed that we don't have a school board liaison with your committee, your group. Is there a particular reason why?
No, there's not a particular reason why. None that I can think of.
They didn't invite, they didn't invite you. And, but...
I have a feeling there will be an invitation at the start of, start of the meetings next year, however.
I want to feel the love.
Definitely. Is there anybody that would particularly like to be part of that? I have you all here now. I can make notes.
We're going to, we're going to put our heads together and try to figure out if we can send somebody to join you.
In three weeks, we'll nominate Dr. Baker.
Dr. Baker, please.
Well played, Mr. Zakari. One thing I know that with several of our different committees and teams, sometimes they begin at a certain point. And I think this one, the main charge of this group a few years ago, was to align the work of technology further with instruction. And I do think in the evolution of different teams and committees, there comes a point at which you broaden that group. And I think not only maybe having a school board member liaison, but additionally, I know that you, this is part of the community building portion of it, but eventually, there could even be student representatives. I know with the student advisory team that I have just started with, this is something that's going to be a frequent topic with that group as well, so.
And we have actually also discussed possibly having a parent or two from the community also be part of this as it continues to expand.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And thank you for having a tough skid in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to six point zero four, social, school social worker team raising mental health awareness. Ms. Richardson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. It is truly a pleasure to be able to have the honor to introduce such an amazing team of women to you this evening. At this time, I would like to ask the school social work team to stand, to be recognized for all that you do for our schools, families, and our students. Since 1949, May has been recognized as the Mental Health Awareness Month. This evening, we have members of our school social worker team that will be sharing data about mental health and the impact to our schools and community. I'd like to ask Lisa Dolan, Robin Schrader, Mary Guthrie, and Olivia Hildebrand to come forward.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk to you about something very important, mental health. All of our lives are probably touched by someone who might be experiencing some mental health issues. And we see children who are experiencing mental health issues, and as Tedra said, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. The term childhood mental disorder means all mental disorders that can be diagnosed in childhoods, such as attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, mood and anxiety disorders, and autism spectrum disorders. And we see all of these in our schools. Mental health refers to how children function psychologically on a day-to-day basis, how they think, feel, and act. And mental disorders among children are described as serious changes in the ways children typically learn, behave, or handle their emotions. And symptoms generally start in early childhood, and diagnosis is often made during the school years. So without early diagnosis and treatment, children with mental disorders can have problems at home, school, and informing relationships. And then these concerns follow along into adulthood. One in five children during the teenage years between 13 to 18 have or will have a serious mental illness. So if you think about the typical classroom of about 25, five of those students may currently have a mental health diagnosis or will have a mental health diagnosis during their lifetime. And 50% of lifetime cases of mental illness usually start by about the age of 14. So that would be a freshman or possibly an eighth-grade student. So sometimes the issues that we think are related to transitioning to high school may indeed be the onset of mental health issues. About 50% of students aged 14 and older with a mental illness drop out of high school. So this is a very alarming fact. And 70% of youth in state and mental, excuse me, state and local juvenile justice systems have a mental illness. We're fortunate that the principal of our own Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Center previously worked at Courthouse Academy. So that is very helpful. A very sobering fact is that suicide is the second-leading cause of death among children ages 12 to 17. And the Virginia, and to bring it on to Virginia, Virginia's Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services estimates that between 117,000 and 143,000 Virginia children and adolescents have serious emotional disturbances. So now we're going to talk about some ways that we, the school social workers, have supported students with mental health concerns in the schools.
So our school social work team has training in the areas of mental health as well as behavioral health, also academic and classroom supports, family systems theories, and therapeutic interventions, to include crisis response. As of March 31st of this school year, our team has implemented over 3,000 clinical interventions with students, provided individual counseling and outreach to 565 students, and provided family interventions such as addressing the mental health needs of parents, and providing community resources and referrals to over 714 families. As a team, we have provided consultation for administrators, teachers, and families in 1,389 cases to promote increased educational performance, positive homeschool partnerships, and improve school safety. Research has shown that children's risk for learning and behavioral difficulties rises with their exposure to trauma. Trauma is defined as an event or situation that creates psychological distress and overwhelms the individual's ability to cope. Examples of trauma that we often see in the school setting include child abuse, exposure to domestic violence, community violence, as well as unexpected tragedies and violent crimes. To address the increased need for trauma-informed care, our team is working towards certification in trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, or TFCBT, which research indicates is highly effective in treating symptoms of youth trauma.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about what is trauma-focused CBT. I'm not going to go into too many specific details, but just give you the basics. It's basically a components-based model. You have to be a master's-level clinician. You also, in order to be licensed, have to have a licensed clinical social work license through the Department of Health as well in order to get that certification. Part of that model includes 12 different components that we are trained and learned and able to implement with the students who are experiencing different traumas. It's typically and most effective with students who are experiencing PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder. We most often hear about that with our military families and things like that, but we often don't realize that a lot of our children are struggling with PTSD as well. When students are exposed to murders, violence, things in our communities or in our homes or even in our schools, they often can have this adverse reaction to that. So, trauma-focused CBT is a research-based treatment evidencing success with youth with significant emotional concerns. Treatment can be completed during an academic year. We have access to the children. We have the ability and the training to work with them, and therefore, we are able to see results within a full academic year. Over 80% of children who receive trauma-focused CBT have significant improvement as measured by improved educational, behavioral, and social performance in the classroom. We wanted to share a little bit with you guys, two separate cases, an elementary-level case and a secondary-level high school case, on how this was implemented this past school year. An elementary student presented with traumatic grief, emotional dysregulation, poor peer relationships, boundary difficulties, lack focus, and had difficulty responding to redirection in the classroom. Trauma-focused CBT started with that student, and since that time, improvement has been noted in peer relationships. That student has zero referrals to the office and marked improvement in response to redirection at school. The secondary student is a senior in high school. She had a history of sexual assault resulting in significant emotional dysregulation, self-injurious behaviors, suicidal ideation, as well as attempts. She was failing and had a significant possibility of not graduating this school year. She had an inability to focus, was impulsive, had difficulty with fear and flashbacks in the school setting. PTSD, you can't turn it off. You can't go in when you go to school and flip the switch, and suddenly you just don't experience that. So our children are experiencing that every day. This particular student had discipline referrals for fighting and poor attendance. We started CBT, trauma-focused CBT, and since that time, the student is going to graduate on time. She's passed all of her SOLs. She's no longer experiencing symptoms of PTSD, which is significant. And she is now making healthier decisions with peers and adults, and she is no longer reporting or experiencing suicidal ideation, actions, or even cutting. She reports that she believes she would not have graduated this year without this treatment. So we just wanted to give you guys a little bit of how it actually looks in our school
So where do we go from here? We've spent this last year really focusing on TFCBT. We're actually going to spend another year honing those skills and preparing to take, most of us are preparing to take the exam to become certified in that area. I do want to kind of talk a little bit about the importance of us as a school system responding to these needs. We're most often the first point of contact for these families, we're most often the place where those needs actually get identified by those families or by our staff. The Centers for Disease Control Adverse Childhood Experiences Study documents that there is a stunning link between childhood trauma and the chronic illnesses that people develop as adults, as well as the social-emotional problems that we see in our children and with adults. Research has proven that toxic stress physically changes your brain. Fortunately, we know that brains and lives are plastic. We can make and implement changes that will have long-lasting impact for our children. We can build on those resiliency factors. And some of the things that we know that we need to do are really pretty easy. We need to help kids, allow kids to know that we're listening to their feelings. We need to help kids improve their lives by having trusting relationships. We need to help them ask for help. We need to help them ask for help, and we need to have positive relationships and positive attitudes with those students. Those are all things that schools can do, and do-do, on an everyday basis. When we were putting together this presentation, I found this quote, and I really enjoyed this quote. I think it's pertinent, it's Kate Middleton, and it talks about mental health and physical health and equates the two. As a part of the team in Spotsylvania County Schools that's supporting mental health, and that includes our school counselors, our school nurses, our school psychs, our school social workers, there's a lot of us that are working at providing mental health support to students. It's important and imperative that we ensure that we continue to offer a continuum of services and supports for our students around mental health, our students and our community around mental health, that we ensure that all students have access to mental health services and supports, that we really work to continue to improve the school-community collaboration and provide that integration and coordination of services. And we empower families so that they can understand and manage the needs and the systems that are in place in order to support students. We thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and would gladly field any questions.
Thank you all, ladies, for your presentation. If we could hold, we may have some board members with comments. Any comments?
Yes.
Let's start with Ms. Blaylock, and then we'll go with Mr. Twig.
Well, I mean, I just am here to say I support everything you're doing. I've spoken with Mrs. Richardson privately many times about mental health in our schools, and I just can't say enough about the team of you all and your colleagues in the back. Talk about some heroes. You are doing some good things, and I just really, really can't tell you how glad I am to see that mental health is being recognized more. If you have ever been around it, it is a scary thing, and a child can't learn and be educated when they are dealing with such difficulties within their own head and their own, for lack of a better term, demons that they're fighting. And so to find tools that not only -- the two examples were very good, because that's just two examples of hundreds of kids in our school system. I'm not talking about hundreds. That show that with our intervention, the expertise that you all have, the certifications that you're getting to know how to deal with something like that, because nine times out of ten, the families at home don't even know how to deal with it. They're not certified to do this. So their help is really coming from you and you all sitting in the back. And it's a game changer for these young people. So thanks for what you do, and please, just anything I could do as a school board member to support it, let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Mr. Twig.
How do you identify students that have relative said needs so that you can engage with them?
There's a variety of ways that students are identified. Frequently, there's a need that's identified by a classroom teacher, that maybe a child is having behavioral concerns, emotional concerns. Sometimes it's attendance as a need, that we notice that there's a problem with attendance or there's hospitalizations that are needed. So it generally comes from classroom teacher and then goes to the counseling staff, which might include the school counselor as well. And from there, we staff and try to identify who has the most needs and how do we make sure that we're spreading the services around to whoever those needs are.
Okay. And then, how does your efforts work with or conversely against the code of conduct and even the law? In other words, you know, what, given any specific situation, code of conduct often enters into a student's action and reaction. And are you ever -- I presume that you all put yourselves or been in a position where you've had students that had a rub with either the law or the code of conduct before you acknowledged them. So if that's effective, an effective statement, then how do you engage and work with or against or avoid those two entities?
I'm going to let Robin answer that as a high school person that works primarily with the high school.
Well, I don't think that we work like for or against the code of conduct. I think we work in collaboration with the code of conduct. We frequently work together with our administrators. Our services are not in place of the disciplinary code that is required. It often works in collaboration, but a lot of those kids in that particular situation are in crisis. So our number-one priority at that point is to make sure the child is safe and that those students around and the people around that child are safe. And then we present and go with services following that. We are involved in cases that are involved in the legal system, and we do work as support system. We also work with some of our administrators for that creative discipline and working to work on anger management and things like that as well. So I think it's a collaboration rather than a to and a against.
Okay. And then, does that include working with students at home, presuming they're kicked out of school or homebound somehow?
We have. I think that's an area where I think we struggle, in all honesty. I think part of it is numbers of staff and our ability to do that. We are frequently in our communities and do work with families. We do home visits, we work. We do work with students. I know we've had some students that have gone on medical homebound that have come in for treatment. I've had one of those that has happened where the parent has brought the child back in to see me because we were in the middle of a very specific model. And I know we didn't talk about it, but it was on one of the slides that, you know, mental health services in our community are available however they are limited. And we just don't have enough resources to manage the need within this community. And it takes about--
Student need within the community?
Yes.
Thank you.
Student need within this community to manage their mental health, well, adult needs as well, because we are also dealing with the mental health of parents and how that impacts the child in the classroom as well.
Do you work with the parents?
Yes, we do sometimes.
Wonderful.
We do. And so it takes about three to four months to hook up a student for an initial assessment or an initial contact with a therapist in our community. And three to four months during a school year, you can also sometimes lose children in that place or have significant decline in functioning.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Mr. Blaine, did you have a comment?
You've talked about needs and some of the things you do, and there's another angle, I think, that at least is important to me, because when you have a youngster in a classroom who's having difficulties, it takes more teacher time, and it takes away from the other children. So we have a vested interest in solving these problems for that child as quickly as possible, but also the rest of the students as well. And if you had an option tonight and said, you know, and we said, what are the three most important things that you could get from the board that would help you do your jobs better? What are two or three things that you feel, you know, quite strongly about?
That's a loaded question.
Yeah, it is. I grant that, but--
Money, dollars, and green checks? How's that?
Frankness is helpful. It helps us understand.
Staff is important. Staff is important. If we had -- a couple of years ago, we moved to where we were able to have one school social worker at one school. We have now two schools that have a dedicated school social worker. The difference that makes is unbelievable as far as the ability to respond to the needs in that particular building and become very knowledgeable of the needs of that population. So it's a matter of, in my opinion, staffing.
Are many -- do many of your staff cover more than, obviously, more than two schools?
Yes. Almost all of our staff have more than -- well, we all have basically two schools. We have a couple of people that are assigned to one school. Almost everybody else has two schools. Right now, we have a couple of people who are assigned to three schools.
What else besides? Somebody else has an idea here?
I was just nodding. I thought you said three schools.
I think we also need access to additional training and resources. I think that ongoing learning is very important, especially in this changing world and the mental health with the threat assessment and risk assessment and, you know, mental health needs that are popping up everywhere. We just, I think we've embraced that training. We're willing to get more training, but it's constantly changing. And to be able to have access to that is extremely important.
It's also an area where you need the dedicated leadership, because you can go any number of ways and provide services, any number of different avenues or models, but with strong leadership about where it is that we are going. And I think we're moving in that direction and have good strategic plans, but good, strong mental health leadership around what we're doing will help focus and provide resources in a better way for our students.
Help us some guidance, too.
Thank you, Ms. Blaine. Dr. Meyer?
I would say thank you for highlighting a very, very important need, because sometimes when we're going to be approving a budget later on this evening, and you look at a budget and someone wants to take, well, twenty-five students per classroom, all you need is one teacher for twenty-five students, and they forget about the needs that those students have and then how do we address those needs. So you have definitely highlighted one very, very important aspect. Mr. Blaine and I attended a conference several months ago in which a juvenile judge had said, when it comes to my courtroom, I'm the chief, and I will dictate what services are going to be provided. And guess what? He was really speaking to the need where we, as a board, get into disciplinary hearings, and we have to look at the needs of the child. And the judge was talking about, you know, don't just kick the student out and give them to the prison, the pipeline to prison. You really need to be addressing the needs of those students. And he spoke about a young lady who had knocked out a kid next to her, and naturally, she was put out of school. But no one asked, why did she do that? And when they came to investigate, and the short of the story is, he found out because she was being sexually molested, and she knocked the guy out. And he said, you know, if we really got to the core of the problem, you know, we need to address the students' needs. If we address the students' needs, he said, I'll take care of the rest. You know, but you, as a board, need to be looking at the students' needs. When you're in disciplinary, get back to code of conduct and the ramification, the tie-in there, and the tie-in that you folks bring, you know, to addressing those student needs is what triggers, because we don't know. But when on you will have much more insight into those needs than we ever do. But when it gets to our table, you know, all of us sitting here truly do look out for the needs of the students. And it's not, you know, putting a student out, it's how do we address the needs of the student? And that's what the judge was saying. And he really did highlight, for me, the very importance of what you ladies are saying to us. You know, he made the point very clear in that we need to be addressing the needs of those students. Once you understand what their needs are, then garner those supports. And he was speaking from Georgia in a county system and saying, you know, when it was in his courtroom, he could dictate the services, and he would call in the services of the schools and the other agencies and start making the connections. And I think, you know, we tend to forget, get back to the budget, that that's what we have to do with our resources, is put resources, and we could use umpteen more resources, you know, in funding in order to be able to address truly the needs. And you're highlighting some of the needs that have been overlooked for a long, long time, and now they've come to the forefront. And we do need to be addressing those needs. So I want to say thank you for helping us, because we all do work together, and we're trying to, you know, resolve what services we can provide and how best we can provide and how we can begin to address the needs of all of our students. Thank you, ladies.
Dr. Baker?
Thank you all for presenting this, and we are indeed fortunate to have the level of expertise and specialization that each of you bring as individuals and collectively. And so thank you all for being here tonight. I had an observation and then a couple of quick questions that I think might help to accentuate what you've already shared. First observation is that in twenty-four years, it seems to me that we could probably, and I don't like to be overly dramatic, but we could say that we're in the midst of a mental health crisis, I think, in our public schools. When you look at the statistics that we're seeing now, and it's, and I've brought this up about other areas of the budget, we can't even look at individual class sizes the same way in terms of an average because of the level of need that we may have in terms of what students are coming to us with. And I wanted to know if your experience, and some of you have been in your positions for quite a while, if your experience is that this has been, I guess, a staggering change over the last five years, or whether it's something that just progressively has gotten worse in terms of what you're seeing. I remember when, social workers, your entry point into the conditions of our students and their families was truancy as a primary entry point. And now, you don't have to wait for that before you're finding out that here's -- and so the entry point seemed to be all over the place, but then not enough capacity to meet all of those needs simultaneously. But have you seen it increase more significantly in the last few years, or has it been gradual? And I'm especially interested in terms of students in the Internet, just your perspective on that. And so that's the one question, what you've seen. And the second, in terms of training that you brought up that you all need, it's my sense that we have to continue to train all of our educators more on the importance of relationships and the importance on understanding that whole child before many of them can ever even learn academically what is in a curriculum guide. And so what your suggestions for how we can do that, again, with a limited budget? So, to recap, first, what you see in terms of the trend and whether you associate any of it with the explosion in technology access and Internet at young ages? And two, how we might approach that training piece to better support all of our educators and you in meeting these needs?
I'll take the one Internet question. I've been a school social worker with the county for seventeen years. Seventeen years ago, we didn't have, it wasn't anything that we knew about or thought about. It wasn't an issue for us. And then, as the Internet became more prevalent, then we started saying, oh, well, you know, that's going on outside of school, so we're not going to deal with it. Well, now it's to a point, we can't, we cannot say that. And so much is happening with social media, and the kids are way, way ahead of us. And they don't, they're not using Facebook anymore. They're using Snapchat and Instagram and probably a whole lot of other things that I don't know about. But it does come into the school. It absolutely does come into the school. And in terms of some of the mental health concerns, we will get information from students that another student has posted something. And the good news is that, you know, there's more of an opportunity to address those things that we may not have known about previously. So that is the good news, but it is becoming very, very difficult to manage, and that is, explosion is a really good word.
The three of us on this side have been around for a while, and I will tell you that absolutely, the last five years, it's, yes, was there some progressive kind of increasing in the difficulty that was happening before then? The last five years have been, explosion is a good word. And to address your other question about training for staff, I do believe that's a good way to go. I think the concept of trauma-informed schools is a very good place for us to be. Educating our staff around adverse childhood experiences and then responding to that is a good place for that to be. As far as budget issues and funding with that, you have an expert team who is able to do that. It's a matter of, let's do it and make it happen for our teachers. I think I've got a phenomenal staff who would do a great job in training the rest of our staff around the concepts of trauma-informed schools.
Well, I just have one short question. My question pertains to our lines of support and lines of communication with external agencies and county staff and their social services program. Can you give me an overview of how we coordinate and communicate with them externally?
We work collaboratively, daily, sometimes hourly, minutely, with the various agencies. The school social work team particularly works interagency. That's one of our strengths in making sure that we have that integration and collaboration. So generally, if there's a crisis of some kind that occurs in our buildings, whether we're the first to identify it, or the Community Services Board, or Department of Social Services, there's going to be that pooling together of resources. Naturally, in the system, there is the process called the Family Assessment and Planning Team, which forces us to do that. However, informally, we've developed all of those connections and relationships over the years that we have that ability to continue to work and to respond in a more effective way for our students. Do we need to keep working on that? Absolutely. It is-- way for our students. Do we need to keep working on that? Absolutely. It is an area where people change, things change, the community changes, our needs change, and we have to stay on top of ensuring that we're collaborative with the various agencies that we work with.
Yeah, I want to thank you for that. There's always been discussions about strategic alliances where we can use our resources in conjunction with other county resources in a strategic way that is beneficial for both the county and for the school system. And this sounds like another indication that that's something that we do. And so I appreciate your feedback in that regard. Thank you very much, ladies. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you very much. We're going to move on with the consent agenda, 7.01 and 7.02. Dr. Martin?
On the consent agenda this evening, of the approval of the minutes of the May 9, 2016 regular meeting, and donations which are used uncustomary, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will so move.
Moved by Mr. Blaine. We have a second. Second by Ms. Blaylock. It's properly moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. The motion carries six, zero with one absent. Moving on to the news, 8.01. Resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors issue general obligation bonds for the use on the school's fiscal year 2017 capital projects. Ms. Gaines?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, School Board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. As you will recall, on Friday night, we had a work session. The primary purpose of that work session was to resolve the remaining gap of 858,000. In detail, you discussed looking at your CIP plan, which was 27.6 million. By bringing that down by 4.2 million, the new CIP plan would be 23.4. And that will be funded through bond referendum and cash that's in the CIP fund balance. So tonight, we do present to you a resolution for your approval. If it is approved, it would then go to the county staff and then it will be recorded by the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as presented by staff.
I'll second.
Properly moved by Dr. Meyer and seconded by Ms. Blaylock. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Will, I will call your name and then you will indicate your vote by roll call. Ms. Blaylock?
Aye.
Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Dr. Meyer?
Meyer, aye.
Ms. Gramp?
Gramp, aye.
And Braswell, aye. Ms. Shelley is absent. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 8.02. Adoption of the fiscal year 2017 School Board Operating Budget and Revisions to the 2017-2021 Capital Improvement Plan. During our meeting on February 8, 2016, this board approved a budget for fiscal year 2017 based on the final state and local revenues. This board is adopting tonight's fiscal year 2017 operating budget and its revised 2017 through 2021 capital improvement plan. State funding in the adopted budget is 132.4 million, an increase of 5.1 million over fiscal year 2016 based on the General Assembly's adopted budget. The county transfer in the adopted budget is 123.5 million, an increase of 7 million over the fiscal year 2016 budget. Increased investment at both the state and local levels will reap great dividends as the school division continues to improve student learning and achievement, attract and retain high-quality staff, and preserve the division's assets. Fiscal year 2017 adopted budget highlights include 2% COLA for all eligible contracted employees, VRS rate increases, 11.8% health increase, health insurance rate increase for employers, 5% health insurance rate increase for employees, net increase of 11 positions, non-compensation increases, debt service increase, and a 41,000 starting teacher salary, Bachelor Step Zero. This board is very appreciative of the increased fiscal support from the state and the Board of Supervisors as we achieve our mission together. We prepare our students for their future. The 2017-2021 CIP includes capital projects, I mean, capital maintenance, capital technology, capital transportation projects based on educational program requirements. It's the recommendation that the school board adopt its 2017 operating budget and its 2017 through 2021 revised capital improvement plan. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Braswell, I move to adopt the FY17 School Operating Budget and revisions to the CIP.
Ms. Gramp has moved to adopt the budget and the revised capital improvement plan, seconded by Ms. Blaylock. Discussion. Dr. Meyer?
I'd like to say one thanks to the Board of Supervisors for the funding, one for the 4.9 million in ongoing funding, and the 2.1 one-time funding. I realize it's one time. It, you know, we have to find it again next year. But I would like to say special thanks to Chris Yakubowski before he stepped out to come up with a plan that was a win-win for the school division and for the county. You know, he came up with the means whereby that one-time funding could be approved. If it wasn't for his efforts to bird dog that and to come up with a compromise, we wouldn't have it tonight. And we would be having to make true cuts to our budget. One, thank Dr. Baker and the finance staff. I know Mrs. Gaines and her staff. And Ms. Strombach, I know you're going to miss the work with us, but truly, from this board member, many thanks for your, for your work over these years. You will definitely be missed. There's going to be, someone's going to have some big shoes to fill. But we do wish you well and thank you for the, your effort. I want to say persistence for being able to come up with a joint effort. It has been a team effort. It's interesting that with, as we've gone through this budget process, and I didn't say anything earlier this evening, but I was able to attend Chancellor High School's senior awards. And in scholarships, Chancellor had 4.8 million, a little more than that, right, Mrs. Massforton? 4.8 and some change. But, you know, the students are doing their part as well, you know, as we and the parents. So it's a win-win, you know, for our teachers, our staff, and our students. And as we saw this evening with our social workers as a team, how multifaceted education is. It's not just what's going on in the classroom, you know, but it's what is required of each and every student. We have to meet them, their needs where they are. And that's become more and more difficult. It requires more and more resources. But certainly has my approval, my vote in approval of this budget for all the items that Mr. Braswell has identified that we were able to accomplish. I do recognize things we cannot, but those will be for the next year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. I want to move down and have Ms. Gramp go next.
Thank you. I am thrilled to be able to share my time with many members of our award-winning finance staff by serving on all the finance committees. I am proud of the FY17 budget being presented tonight. It reflects months of consulting with parents, teachers, and other members of the community, multiple meetings and work sessions, and a constant reworking of numbers to identify and meet the needs of our students. I would also like to thank my fellow board members, Dr. Baker, and staff, as well as the Board of Supervisors. That being said, this budget boasts the highest increase of revenue in many years from state and local sources, but with mandatory costs and expenses incurred to meet unfunded and mandated services rising at a much larger rate, a deficit still existed, not a surplus as desired. Our projected expenses still exceeded our revenues, so we had to prioritize and were unfortunately unable to meet every need that we previously identified. While many priorities were stricken from the slate, including a step for our employees as well as adjusting frozen steps, we were able to provide a 2% COLA for our employees. The activity buses and reduced activity fees were left unfunded this year due to the shortfall in funding, but we were able to hire an additional person in Fleet Services to help with Special Education Transportation Dispatch. Although we had to eliminate the gradual restoration of stipends, this budget was able to fund the increases in VRS, health insurance, and debt service. The 14 math teachers we hoped to hire will have to wait another year, but we were able to meet the mandates of our ever-growing special education and English as a Second Language programs by including two ESOL teachers and two, 12 special ed teachers. Again, I am proud that from constant reallocation of funds and positions as well as creative resolutions, this budget is able to meet the needs it does for FY17. I will caution that as hard as this year was to meet all of the identified needs, the next two years will prove to be harder. The mandatory operational costs are predicted to rise at a larger rate than in the past. And if the trend continues for special education and ESOL enrollment, we are expected to rise exponentially. Unfunded mandates and underfunded mandates have always been a challenge, but with ADA funding still around a mere 17% and special education enrollment rising by hundreds, we will barely be able to meet those challenges we are required by law to meet, much less serve new priorities. Each year, we hope to meet the needs of our students and work within our strategic plan to reach our goal of preparing students to be career and college ready. I urge the Board of Supervisors to start strategic planning now for education funding. Both boards need to be working towards similar goals in order to get the greatest rate of return on the taxpayers' investment in the children of Spotsylvania County.
Thank you, Ms. Gramp. Mr. Blaine?
I would just like to second what Ms. Gramp just read. I think that says the whole thing. Certainly things that all of us would have liked to have done had we been able to. But we, I'm very pleased to be able to vote aye on this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Mr. Twig?
Again, special thanks to everybody involved. We've accomplished a lot this budget cycle and we've really notched a step forward, which I'm happy for and proud to be a part of. And our counties are truly blessed financially this, this round, this fiscal year. And let's just hope it can continue. But we have a lot to be grateful for right now. Let's spend wisely and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Ms. Blaylock?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. It, it always feels odd to me that we get to this point and there's not a lot said and we just approve it and move on. So I want to highlight there, Ms. Gramp actually did a very fine job of, of sharing the work sessions and the work that's went into this evening. It takes a lot to get to tonight. So when you hear us say a few words, don't let, don't let that fool you. We've been working very hard behind the scenes. Dr. Baker and his staff, I can't thank you all enough. This is such a big part of what we do, is to make sure that we can fund, like we were looking tonight, the REACH program, our social workers, the fine arts, everything that makes the whole child. And allows the kids that, as Dr. Meyer was speaking of when he was talking to Ms. Massforton about the senior awards and as they're walking across the stage and they've worked so hard for their scholarships, all of this work right here allows those days to happen. All of this work today allows those days, as we saw the child who was not set to graduate due to some mental health difficulties, and now will walk across that stage. It's, it's, a lot of things sort of fell into place for me today. And something I think was also ironic happened, I happened to be in a public setting today where I was sitting across from a young lady. And I said to her, I complimented her on her eye color. And we began talking. She had graduated last year. And she and I talked about the whole child. And she was telling me the opportunities that were afforded to her being in Spotsylvania County schools. And she is now currently at her college on athletic scholarship. And she talked about her peers and the ones that, that they didn't know would graduate and the, the things that were afforded to them, the online programs of credit recoveries that allow these kids to move on with life and allow them to make mistakes and still make it. And then also allows to promote the gifted child, the ones who are going after the big scholarships, the Ivy League schools, as we have the Massiponics young man that just has chosen Yale. We can do it all here in Spotsylvania County. And this is where it really happens, is setting a budget and the funding and then spreading the wealth to every level, whether it be our gifted program, our Ms. Richardson's programs where our social workers are supporting our children who need a little bit more, to our English as a Second Language learners. There's just so many different facets of this community we have. And I'm such a proud member of it. I love Spotsylvania County and I really, really can't say enough about the school division. So although this is about numbers right now, to me, it's about the child. So this vote is not only very important, it of course gets my support. There's not a budget this large that you couldn't say there's things you wish you could have done. And I'm with you on the activity buses and all that. But being a long-term member of the board, one thing I can tell you is although I could not be more appreciative of the funding we received this year, not at anybody's fault, we haven't been receiving funding. So even though it was great, it's just sort of barely getting us back to square one. We're still, the things that we're restoring are extremely small. We don't have the, all the funding we need just yet. We're working towards it. I think this year was a huge step in the right direction, huge. Our local government body, I mean, they, they did a great job of stepping up and funding us. Honestly, since I've been on the board, the biggest transfer I have seen, starting in 2009. It was just very helpful, but we can't forget that we were in a deficit and we were working to get out of that deficit. So it was great, but it's just putting us back to square one, sort of. And we still have a long way to go. So although I wanted activity buses and there was a lot of things we wanted to put back this year, and I won't get on that bandwagon, as you know how I feel about activity buses, but it's hard to put those big-ticket items back on quickly. Something this county does, the finance team, I've never really seen one do it better, is they look ahead. If you remember years ago, we had the stimulus money, we, I think we were one of the few divisions that were stopping right then. And we knew how to plan that out, so we didn't get caught giving pink slips. If anyone can remember, all the pink slips that went out after the stimulus stopped. That's something this finance team does, would just, that never has stopped. I've never seen a finance team plan ahead, as well as Ms. Gaines and her team. So I want to thank you for that. That has saved us many times and it has, it has saved us from having to pink slip employees and making sure that we can still provide and they can provide for their families and provide their wealth of knowledge to the kids in the county, which is really what we're here for. So I'm going to take this time to say, Ms. Strombach, I'm going to miss you. We were able to have a personal conversation about it. Thank you for your, all, all of your contributions to us over the years of helping us get through these budgets because you are going to be a, a big, a big hole in the finance team. So we're going to miss you. That's all I have to say. But again, a lot of work has went into this. Friday night, we sit down and really rolled up our sleeves and hashed it out. We've come to a good place and I can't be more pleased with our superintendent and his staff. It will get my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. I want to, Ms. Shelley had a conflict this evening. She needed to be at the convocation for her daughter and rightfully so. In fact, on, on cue, here she is. So we're going to give her a second to get in her chair so she can read her statement.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I, hm? Okay. Well, I am just, I, sorry I wasn't here. Main thing I want to say is thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you to Dr. Baker and staff, finance staff, cabinet, everybody. Because I know all the administration, everybody was a part of this budget. So I want to thank you all for all that you did. I support this budget and I missed everyone's comments. Live streaming- Live streaming doesn't work on my phone, but I do want to say, and I don't know what everyone says, but I want to, I am going to vote for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley, and right on time. Absolutely. I have a few comments I'd like to make. First of all, as we all are very well aware of and cognizant of, is that a budget is nothing more than a financial representation of what we value, and we value the children in this school division that we call our best and our brightest, and believe in our spirits that they're our best and our brightest. And so I'm so happy and delighted that the dollars or the commitment that was provided this year to make sure that we can make that happen was in effect by our Board of Supervisors working together with us to make that happen. So I salute them for the work that they did, and I salute every Board member on this dais for the work that they did. Every Board member from, has brought their unique skill set to the table and advocated vigorously on behalf of this school division for the funding that we got, and I'm so appreciative of what each person brought to the table. And I want to just take this opportunity to say to each and every one of you, thank you. You made your chairman's job really easy. I want to thank Dr. Baker and his staff for all the hard work that they do, day in and day out, so that the presentation of the budget and all the details that we needed in order to do, the advocacy that was required was provided for us. So Doc, thank you for everything that you've done for the preparation and getting us in a position to win. I'm so thoroughly grateful. To each one of our staff and all of our employees, believe it or not, you are the reason why we do what we do. And you really stepped up in a great way, not just in the planning for this budget, but just doing the jobs that you do every day was a great indication to everyone in this community that Spotsylvania County schools are worth investing in. So thank, thank each one of you for the work that you do, which is greatly appreciated by this Board, and I'm so honored to have the opportunity to be the chairman at this particular time. And I am humbled by the fact that we have such committed stakeholders in this community to public education. So with that being said, I say thank you all. I am really committed to this process, because to me, this budgeting, budget that we're going to approve is not an event, it is a process. Yes, we're going to adopt it tonight, and everyone's going to be relieved and excited, but I tell you that the process goes on. And we need to continue to look ahead. We need to continue to bridge opportunities with our Boards of Supervisors and county staff, and if there are additional dollars, and I'm just talking to the Board of Supervisors now, if there's additional dollars, we intend to come by and have a little chat with you because our school division needs it. So with that being said, we have a, I believe, a motion that's on the floor, do we not? And it's properly seconded. We have all seven members here. So we're going to start with Ms. Shelley, because she, she just showed up. We're going to let her vote first. Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
Dr. Meyer?
Meyer, aye.
Ms. Blalock?
Blalock, aye.
Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Ms. Gramp?
Gramp, aye.
And Braswell, aye. The budget is adopted, 7-0. Our new 8.03 is Authorization of Signature in Absence of Division Superintendent. Dr. Baker?
Yes, thank you. The State Department of Education requires that the school board designate someone to sign official documents in the absence of the superintendent, and I'm going to ask the school board to continue to authorize Ms. Gaines, our Chief Financial Officer, to be named to sign those official documents in my absence, as is currently the practice. Thank you.
I will move the recommended action. Mr. Chairman?
Move by Mr. Blaine. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. Moving on to our new 8.04, Approval of Pre-Algebra and AP Chemistry Textbooks. Ms. Balaico?
Good evening again. It was kind of nice to be up here for the local plan rather than textbook adoption, but here I am before you tonight. This will be the last two texts I bring before you this fiscal year. It closes out the carryover funds from FY15 and as well as our textbook line for this year. In accordance with our local textbook adoption policy, IIIAA, the Spotsylvania County Public Schools have reviewed and selected multiple textbooks under consideration tonight. Big Ideas Course 2 Accelerated has been chosen for our pre-algebra courses in the middle school. Activities and explorations involve student-directed discovery learning, allowing students to develop conceptual understanding. Big Ideas integrated the latest educational technology with industry-leading mathematics curriculum, and includes dynamic assessment system, student ebook app, and teaching tools. AP Chemistry, the 12th edition by McGraw-Hill, has online tools for student success called Connect Plus. Through Connect Plus, students engage with Learn Smart, an adaptive learning tool, AP Suggested Assignments, interactive conceptual problem-solving tools, and an interactive ebook. Connect provides a complete learning and engagement solution. The bundle includes Print Student Edition, AP Review Guide, six-year online student success, access to online, onboard Connect Plus Scoreboard, and six-year online teacher resources and professional learning. It is administration's recommendation that the school board adopts and purchases the textbooks as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Balaico. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to move to purchase the textbooks that were brought up.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to purchase the textbooks that were referenced by Ms. Balaico. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, moving on to 8.05, Center for Family and Preschool Services Interior Alterations, There he is, Mr. Hockaday.
Good evening, Mr. Braswell, Board Members, Dr. Baker. Tonight I have the privilege of presenting with Mrs. Balaico on the following agenda item. Just some background information on the item. During the summer of 2014, Head Start and Child Find moved to the former Cordova Academy Building, which is now known as the Head Start Building. They did so to combine services into one location and also free up space in other locations. By moving forward with the renovations to this building, it would also allow the additions of the ESOL Welcome Center and the Parent, Family-Parent Resource Center in the same facility. By doing so, this brings needed programs into one location for our community. It is also of note to point out that the building is directly across the road from the Rapid and Community Services Board and also a Fred Bus Stop. The move will also provide ITTC Center and John J. Wright with additional space by doing this. The approved FY16 capital improvement plan provides funding for interior alterations of the Family Resource Center. The project consists of, but is not limited to, replacing windows, upgrading lighting, upgrading HVAC systems and controls, and replacing the fire alarm system. I'll also note out that by doing these things, we're following the energy plan that the Maintenance Department is striving to maintain by upgrading to LED lighting and maintaining the upgrade and performance of our control system. The project was advertised on the Eva Virginia Statewide Procurement website and on the Division's purchasing website. Bids were received April 12, 2016, and they are as follows. Akin Incorporated, $700,747,760, and 80 Whittaker, $790,000 even. Since the project came in over budget, we sit down and had additional negotiations with Akin Incorporated. These resulted in the savings and the, in a lower cost to the division of $687,095. Maintenance will continue to work with the contractor during the construction phase and throughout the period of the project. The administration's recommendations, the school board accepts the negotiated low bid of $687,095 submitted by Akin Incorporated to perform the work referenced to in the above project. All the firm's bid documents were submitted in accordance with the instructions to bidders and qualifications met or exceed the recommendations set forth for the project. In addition, we propose changing the name of the facility, Center for Family Preschool Services. I will also note that we have looked into next year's CIP, and after these bids came in, we got some additional pricing of projects that we're to do next summer and getting some stronger numbers. We have revealed several projects that I think we will, I feel that we will save an additional $200,000 on in projects. So the money will be there in the CIP budget to cover the existing money that it was overpriced on. A few things, other things I wanted to point out was, this building was built in 1972. As we all know, it was constructed to be the original school board office. I know of nine different programs that's been in that building since then. Six of them have been in there since, in the 22 years I've been here. Part of this renovation was because the space was no longer used properly and could be used better to provide better service for the community. At this time, I will step aside and let Ms. Balaico explain the programs. She can do so much more eloquently than I can.
I don't, I don't know about that. One of the things that often hurt me as a principal was when families came into my building and I had to send them all different places to get the services that they needed. And one of the things we've been talking about is many of the families who access our preschool services also access some ESOL services and our Parent Resource Center, but they were, they were in three different locations. And many of the things that those three folks do, they do in concert. They put on parent nights for families, they do a lot of things together and work together a lot. So it made sense, if some of these needed renovations were to take place, that this would be a natural time for, to bring those folks together, to be able to work in concert and be a little more streamlined for our community. That way, they're sent to one place, and it's a place that they know, it's right by the courthouse. We're not sending them in different directions where they may not be able to find the location. So out of that, and in concert with maintenance, you know, and talking about, definitely there were some needs there. Shaun and his folks felt like they could help accommodate by making the space accessible for all. So that's really the only part in this. He is the man with the hammer, so he knows that part.
Any questions? Do we have any questions? Well, we need to have a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Ms. Blalock?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Now, do we have any questions? Go ahead, Dr. Meyer.
Shaun, your timeline for getting this accomplished this summer is going to give you sufficient time to make these renovations.
Yes, sir. We, we plan on it happening this summer. We have made some efforts to have a Plan B if necessary, and part of that is those that are in that facility over the summer and will actually be moving to maintenance. We are turning our training room into their office space, so in case something happens, we are not running into a problem where we're trying to get done and rush to get done in order for school to start and rush to get them back in. They're in a place that we can transition after school starts if need be.
Thank you. I'm glad you, I was just looking for the backup. Thanks, much appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Shelley?
Okay, I know that Head Start is already there. Is anybody else there already to?
Child Find?
Child Find and Head Start are there. And then, provided everything goes as planned and it's scheduled, and I'm going to say it will, when would the ESOL and Parent Resource Center move into the building?
With hopes that week prior to school opening. So during that teacher week, they're kind of back in doing some things. Shaun and his team would be moving those folks back. You know, when things start to ramp up in schools and start to get busy again in schools, it's my understanding from Mr. Hockaday that that's when his guys have to kind of pull back from school projects, so that that would help them get those folks in.
Ms. Balaico, Mr. Hockaday, is it realistic, though, that all of the folks are at least acquainted with the idea that it could take beyond the summertime and there could be a later transition, say the fall or the beginning of the second semester?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Through the whole project, we've met with staff and we've gone over the timeframe, timeline of the project, and recently changed the location of where they're actually moving to, to maintenance. And they are aware that it could be later than that week, but from my understanding, all of them have been willing to, they would rather for it to be there and not be in a rush than try to move that week before.
I just want to have a small question, Ms. Balaico. You're going to have multiple organizations in that one building. Who will be the overseer for those type of conflicts that could arise when multiple organizations are in the same building?
Actually, I think Mr. Mudd and I, he oversees the preschool programs now. This was kind of the start of something that I started, so I wanted to kind of see it through to the point where we might be able to pull it together. But really, it's a, it's a team effort. Mr. Mudd oversees the preschool piece. Christine Lenz-Johnston helps oversee our ESOL program, and Title I and Tedra's office oversee the Parent Resource Center. So I can, I can honestly say it will be a group effort.
I, I understand group efforts, but it still needs to be one chief, and we need to tweak that, because whenever you have, it's not that the personalities today don't work well together, but you never know what personality you'll get in the future, and there needs to be definitive oversight for multiple organizations in one office. Just my, my same, Dr. Baker?
Yeah, Mr. Braswell, I think all of the love and harmony will be managed on a daily basis by a point person, and I believe the point person is Ms. Dawn Miller. Is that correct? Yeah, so she is the point of contact, I think, to oversee those programs. Yeah.
Dawn, Dawn will be, Dawn will be chief in love. I got you. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the- We have a motion on the floor and it's been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to nine point zero one, nine point zero two, informational items, Ms. Leonard, customary. And we'll move on to ten point zero one, any unfinished business. Unfinished business, seeing none. Ten point zero two, any new business? I'm going to make one announcement for new business for any board member that has not turned in their economic interest. We have until the, I believe it's the 15th of June. And if we don't turn it in by the 15th of June, there will be a $250 fine. So heads up, board members, to turn that in, please. With that, we're going to move on to eleven point zero one, that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes. Consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by two point two dash thirty-seven-eleven A1 of the Virginia Code. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Dr. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Blaine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, we are now in closed session. We have a motion by Dr. Meyer to return this open session, seconded by Ms. Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? We are back in open session, motion carries seven zero. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section two point two dash thirty-seven-eleven of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. We have a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Dr. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Blaine. Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Grant.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blalock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Motion carries seven zero. See, items from the closed meeting, thirteen point zero one, Dr. Martin.
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendations of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, resignations, retirement, the request for extended leave for the 2016-17 school year, and terminations as presented in closed meeting and presented by Section two point two dash thirty-seven-eleven A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blaine, seconded. Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries seven zero. Motion to adjourn? I think that was Ms. Grant with the motion to adjourn, an enthusiastic motion to adjourn. We have a second. Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion is, I mean, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.